Okay. All right, we are on, Mr. Mayor.
All right, welcome everyone to the Briar City Council Workshop, May 3, 2022. I want to thank Councilmember Gallagher and Councilmember Cranky for standing in for me the last two weeks. I appreciate that. First on the agenda is review and discuss police lieutenant contract. This is a contract that you've already seen and approved, and you're probably wondering, why is it back? So during the negotiations that the chief had with lieutenant or lieutenant, there was some modifications specifically with respect to the steps of his salary that didn't get on the final draft that went to council. And so Nick and I are going to share the blame on this. And we learned our lesson that if you don't send something to Paula, there might be a mistake in it. So maybe Nick, you want to just fill them in a little bit about negotiations?
Absolutely. When we were discussing just the dynamics of his job and all that entails going through the different parts of the contract and so forth, we had negotiated in that process to start him not at step A but at step B. And it's kind of a short and sweet amendment here in the fact that you guys already understand everything that that transpired with the hiring and process and everything, but we had we had negotiated a step B process, and we just failed to actually put that in the contract and get it to Paula in an accurate form to come before you the first time. So we apologize for that. And so before you do have the corrected yearly amount that we have decided and negotiated with Lieutenant Ridout. And that's pretty much the short and sweet of it unless Mayor, you were looking for something.
No, that's fine. Just maybe tell them the dollar amount so they can.
The dollar amount that he would be getting, the previous one you had 100,000 even, and his step B is 102,500, which is before you.
It's not a significant change, but we need to let you know that that's what we negotiated with him when we were talking about him coming to us. And that's what we would like to see you approve at the next meeting. Anybody have any questions about that? Okay, I will, I will say that we are extremely excited about Nick and Chad. I met with Chad today and Nick and went over some of the things that are going on. And I think I'll let Nick talk about it at our next meeting when he has his report, but all the things that we're working on. And it's, you know, National Night Out is back. Some of the stuff that we just weren't doing is back, cross-training. So we have our two officers who have been with us through thick and thin are technically training our new officers. But the feedback that I'm getting is there's cross-training going on. So our existing officers are thanking us for, I know I'm supposed to be training this person, but he's actually training me. Because the experience level that they come with is really nice. And so we're getting a nice melding of experiences that are gonna be for the benefit of our citizens because now we have more officers and they're better trained and the experiences that these other officers have had from other other previous employment is something that our officers don't get a chance to get that experience. And so just having them in the car together, interacting in the office, it's all, it's all really good. So I'm very excited and Nick will give more information about that at our regular meeting next week.
Hey, one thing if I can point out, I've read a lot of offer letters in my life. I'm sure everybody has. But Section 15 beneficiary, you know, that really puts everything into perspective.
Yeah.
Wanted to make mention of that.
I've never seen it written that that way. The wife for all salary benefits owed and granted. And I'm assuming that's for back pay or whatever hours rather than some enduring pension or enduring annuity of any sort, correct?
Yeah, it's pretty much any residual vacation or any payouts, that sort of thing. The retirement system itself is separate from, although paid through by the city, but separate through Department of Retirement Services.
Right. Okay. Maybe just an operational question, Nick. I had a sidebar conversation today with the mayor on a different matter altogether about data, city data. And will the lieutenant or will you be the shepherd of police reporting data sort of utilization statistics and record keeping?
Yes, and I'm glad you brought that up. It's on my list. Next meeting, you'll have a first quarter look at all of our statistics in comparison to what January of 21 looked like. So that's kind of where we're going to be starting is showing you. We've broadened it a bit from what maybe some of the more tenured council members have seen in the past and changed it up somewhat. So we're going to kind of show you everything from thefts to traffic stops to, you know, the different types of crimes that are occurring here in Briar, so that you can have that quarterly update from us. And then my plan is that I would do an end of year report every year for you to capsulize all that we have done over the year.
Great, thank you.
Okay, anything else? All right, thank you. Moving on to item number two. So late today, we received some more information that we'd like to spend some more time on developing. I know you got some information on the packet. But because we received this information late and it was really good information, helpful questions, and also information that we're going to postpone this until the next workshop. And I'm because this is a difficult decision. This involves a lot of moving parts. And I know that some of you have been helping with the spreadsheets, and I appreciate that because neither Nick or I are spreadsheet experts. So what we're going to do is we're going to, we're going to hold off on discussing this item tonight so that we can have a more thorough presentation for you in hopefully two weeks. That's our goal. In two weeks, we are also at our next workshop going to be talking with fire or South County Fire as well. So hopefully there's not too much information in one night. If it is, then we'll.
There could be a lot of numbers coming.
If it's too much, we're not going to. I do want, I do want Nick to give the chief to give a status of our cars as of today. The status changes hour by hour.
Yes, it does. Thank you, Mayor. And I will echo what the mayor said is that if the RFA takes really protracted a long time, I'm patient, we can hold off the car situation for another two weeks because I know the RFA is a huge decision and it's going to be a lot of data. So currently, we have the one car that I've spoken about quite a bit, which is the number four or known as the P4 car that has had, Mr. Marley has experienced the plume of white smoke. And so we finally got this into a mechanic this week. It turns out that there were two different kinds of spark plugs throughout the car. It was four quarts low in oil, which is normal. It eats about four quarts a week. And they, they changed out the Councilman Nick, what was that again? PVC or.
PCV valve.
Yes, that thing. So we got that. They turned it around in one day. They didn't have to do a lot of work to it other than change spark plugs, change that valve out. And they said that basically, for whatever reason, it's eating the oil at an extreme rate and the engine is more likely not going to, is going to, is going to go. So I have mentioned to several of you in the past about, you know, what do we do? What do we do temporarily to ensure that we have enough cars in the fleet and and be somewhat reliable for our community? And so I have broached the idea with the mayor and gotten some costs on bringing back to life P3 that's been sitting out at Public Works for over a year. It hasn't been surplus. It is going to be on the list soon for surplus, but bringing that back into service in case the P4 does take a nosedive and then we'd be in really big trouble. So I got a quote for what would cost to bring that back to life with adding the all the lights? It's basically a stripped unit. They would just have to add all the lights back into it, the control head sirens, you name it. It still has pushbars and a spotlight and a cage prisoner compartment in the back, but they have to add a lot of components to it to make it serviceable. So that's going to be about $5,000. So the other option that I'm looking at is renting a police car. And the same, the same company FCI that we've been talking about leasing will rent a, they have one available, a 2015 SUV Ford Interceptor like we run right now, and that'll be $600 a month. So these are the options that I have before me right now to make a decision along with the mayor to make sure that we actually have at least the allotted number of cars that we have be ready and available for for use and deployment.
Chief question, any questions?
Yeah, Chief, the 600 a month, that seems like a really good deal. So these are already, are these cars that have come back off of somebody else's lease? There must be.
Yeah, they're trade-ins. They're cars that are that he has on hand that for this purpose from my old department, we had to rent one for a while and cars got, you know, smashed by elk or in collisions and whatnot. We were down cars. So we rented a car from them for several months.
My personal feeling, how close we are now, I assume you need to put a Briar logo. There's some labeling on it and stuff that would probably have to happen if that's allowed.
No, but what we would, they will, they'll say police on it. They're very generic. It just says police, you know, we could fabricate, I guess, like a magnet that said Briar or something, but it would be a generic police car. It may not even be black.
I got you.
How much life is left in P3?
So it's got just under 100,000 miles. When I was looking at the maintenance logs, it hasn't had anything major done to it. No engines or trannies. Of course, it's probably right at that time of life where something will give. But it's just had the normal routine maintenance for 100,000 mile police car.
So that would be equivalent about eight months of rental of the other. Which I would like to think we would have all of our budgeting and figure out how we're going to do this. And we've known this P4 car is going to have to get addressed. It's just how are we going to address it? I think in terms of playing, what's your personal preference or preference?
Well, I, I'm optimistic and I know that this council is going to make the right decision for the city, whether that's leasing or purchasing. I would hope that renting a car would be more more feasible for us than spending the 5,000 for a car that we're just going to repurpose again. So I would lean towards the rental versus.
I would, I would too, to be perfectly honest. I think that I just, if we don't have something, because we've got RFA, we've got windows there, we're figuring out all this thing. I don't, I can't see this taking eight months to be perfectly honest. And we've got more imperative things that we have to work through this. So I would tend to lean your way. It sounds like I see other council members nodding their heads.
What type of contractual obligation or rental agreement would that entail?
It's a month a month.
Oh, wow.
You know, we're just responsible for, you know, obviously, I don't know about the, if it breaks down, I'd have to ask. And I will ask, but we're just responsible for insurance, fuel and the rental per month.
He literally not put, I mean, if we rented for two months, he literally not just put a this briar, at least the briar sticker or something on that we can take back off?
I can ask him.
I mean, that's, yeah, that would be a destructive thing. It's a minor thing, but I don't.
It looks like if you resurrect P3 at 100 some miles, you're actually going to be putting it on par with your P2, which is now operational with 104,000 miles. And I think you've already earmarked that in the packet as one of the cars you wanted to replace if we were to go ahead with a lease. So I'm sort of thinking like Martin and John, the rental may make more sense if ultimately we're going to be replacing P2 and then making a decision about what to do for P3.
And my, my idea for P4 was to sell it to the Vatican, but it's no longer blowing white smoke. So I guess we can.
Has to be an election year.
He's been sitting on that one, Dale.
He has, I think so.
All right. So we'll be back at you because we recognize this is complicated, this leasing versus buying versus renting. And we want to, we want to have, help you make a good decision because it is not clear in my mind or the chief's mind, what's the best way to go. And so that's why we we're going to push off this decision until we have some more answers and more interaction and more data for you.
Just another thought, could we auction that that P3 at this point? Get some money off it to offset the rental of a replacement car?
We can. Paula, Paula just has to bring it before you for surplus, which there's a huge list that she's waiting to kind of do it all at once because it's, it's a big process for her. So we were doing some research through Paula, what's the name of the auction company? JJ, yeah, they have similar cars on there that we could get somewhere between six and 8,000 because you know, cars these days are going pretty fat, pretty high dollar. So we could get about that much for it.
Used cars are only up 35%.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you, everyone. Thank you, Chief. You're welcome to stick around, but you don't have to. I know this next part is going to be very interesting. Tonight, we're going to talk about moving on to item number three, review, and discuss the decant facility replacement and grant. And tonight we have with us John Forba, our engineer from Pace, and Steve is on the line too. For those of you new to the council, this decant facility is something that's been out there needed to be done for a long, long time. And as you could see by the description of the thing that has to get done and the cost, that is not an insignificant project. But it is a project that is important for our city to have. And so I'm going to let Mr. Forba talk about the project, introduce it especially for you that are new on the council and answer any questions that you might have. And Steve is here because if you have questions about how, you know, what the existing situation is, he can answer those questions. So go ahead, John. Thank you for joining us.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. So a decant facility is basically a covered structure where you take your stormwater waste, both solid and liquid, and send them and basically you let them drain out. There's a slope to the slab that allows the water to drain out and then remove the liquid waste goes through grit chamber, goes through another sediment removal chamber, goes through an oil water separator. And the the final liquid waste then gets routed to the sewer. Then the solid waste can either be, that's that remains, it's dry at this point, can either be tested for reuse, or if it tests hot, then you know, we can, we have to dispose of it at a facility. Currently, I would say that there's not really a functioning decant facility within Briar. There's a what looks to be like kind of an old pad that is not covered and basically with a catch basin, just a storm drain that allowed for some of this liquid waste to drain into the storm system. Of course, it's not really, well, we've had to replumb some of the drainage at the Public Works, Public Works yard to meet both stormwater requirements and the sewer requirements from King County Metro. So this would allow our ops crews to, I guess, be more, they could be more diligent as far as cleaning out the stormwater system. And we would do a little loading study to see exactly what the size of the facility would need to be, you know, because you would want at least a couple different bays to ensure that, you know, depending on drying time, where you could send some of this waste and then you could back it up and load it up the next day, things like that. I asked Steve to be here because I don't have the best grasp on all the ops, but currently I believe that the city is contracting out all of the cleaning of the stormwater system, all the catch basins, any pipes, outfalls, ditches, things like that. Because we don't have a decant facility to kind of deal with, deal with this kind of waste. And then I know that we had an interlocal with Mount Lake Terrace to utilize their decant facility, but I believe that was found to be cost prohibitive. So that's where the contractor has been in. And I'm not sure how long that has actually been going on currently, but the idea is to build, build our own decants so we can clean our own system essentially. About a year and a half ago, I went after some grant money from Department of Ecology through a stormwater grant fund. And we received that grant. It's a 75% grant with a 25% local match. It's based off of a cost estimate that I put together. The original estimate was about a year and a half ago was 1.5 million all in for construction, construction, construction engineering, design engineering, permitting, grant administration, everything. And that included a 30% contingency at the time, I believe. So we received that the Department of Ecology was going to pick up 1.125 million of the 1.5 million dollar grant. So the local match would be 375,000. When we spoke previously on this, we thought this would be, you know, coming out of either the stormwater fund or the general fund. But again, I'm not, I'm not privy to a lot of those discussions, but yeah, so it's, I guess it would be a benefit to, you know, water quality throughout the town. And I think that it is, it would be a real asset to the city, I guess, would be my final part.
Money will come out of capital facilities.
Okay.
And, and stormwater, probably some too. But not a lot. It doesn't have enough in there to cover it all.
All right, thank you, Paula and Steve. John, Steve, could you just talk a little bit about what happens now?
Yeah. So like John was saying, currently we are contracting out all of our catch basin cleaning because we don't have that facility. It's basically a catch basin that is called a decant, but it's only there for emergency purposes. And then also, as John mentioned, a few years back here recently, we retrofitted. DOE kind of slapped our hands since that did drain into stormwater and had us install some valves. So now it's routed to sewer when we're washing vehicles, washing out the street sweeper, that sort of things. So there's some upgrades in the interim, but still it's an uncovered bay. It's a clunky system to where you have to turn valves. I know it's even a pain for, I was explaining it to Nick and with all the new officers, how to operate that. So it's not just a quick pull in, wash your vehicle, it's a matter of turn all those valves. Yeah. So with our street sweepings or any street waste, stormwater waste we create, like John was saying, you want to drain off the liquids, send that to sanitary sewer. And then you want to let that drain off to be as light as possible to either reuse, which I don't know if that's practical for organization our size, but to dispose of to lessen that cost because it's all by weight typically. So right now, currently with our street sweepings, it's just an ecology block bin that we're dumping those sweepings into. And, and then we're having to cover with a tarp. We can't have uncovered materials, whether it's our stockpiles or our street sweepings. So currently, we're using blue tarps to cover stuff. Trying to do our washing out in that catch basin, that makeshift decant. And then as far as when it comes to catch basin cleaning, it would be real challenging to try to separate the solids from the liquids with just exposed pads. So covered multi-bay facility like this would be a huge benefit and would allow us with the manpower and correct equipment to get out there and take over our own stormwater facility cleaning.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, biology, biology question with this pond and this new decant facility. Is there inter-railbed conditioning? So would there be an odor that potentially would emanate and people in the surrounding neighborhood might notice and report?
I don't believe so. It's not like a raw sewage necessarily. It's, you know, more street waste, hydrocarbons from oil slicks, things like that. So I don't think that that would really be a concern.
I was thinking of the leaf debris that whatever we're picking up from the gutters of the streets and the decant thing that kind of rotting, rotting vegetation, but.
I think the idea would be to dispose of it before it got to that rotting point. Once the liquids drained off of it and got rid of most of the weight, then have it trucked out.
Okay.
This bid is from July of 21 and expires in July of 25. Do we expect those numbers to increase with the inflationary jumps in costs?
You know, I would say anything's a possibility. I mean, you've all seen inflation numbers and you know, construction, construction materials are expensive. We did put in a healthy contingency and a, I put in some higher numbers for some of the unit costs. But I can't tell you that it will not exceed 1.5 million at this point. It just depending on market conditions, I guess I would say. If we could bid it in a good climate. I believe so, yes. So quite a bit. But again, it's all kind of market conditions and when you can bid this project, if we could bid it earlier in the year with the idea of being breaking ground before a lot of the contractors could kind of get their summer schedule on all put together, maybe, you know, we could get a more competitive bid. There's, there's certain ways that we can, I think, be cost conscious, but I can't tell you that, you know, cost will not go up. So.
And so the maximum is that we're going to get on the grant is the 1.125, correct?
Correct.
So.
Well, there, there, sorry, I should, there have been instances in the past where you can ask for an amended grant depending on how the bids come in. Depending on how much, you know, because DOE wants to see these projects completed and constructed. So I have heard of some projects that have received additional funding under some circumstances. So.
So right now we have to assume it would be safe to assume that any overages are on Briar, correct?
I think it would be safe to assume. It might not be the final case, I guess.
So then the question comes, have we done any kind of cost benefit? That being, what does it cost us to sub out the cleaning and not have to deal with? And not have to deal with equipment maintenance and the. Pond and, and all that, the decant facilities. Have we done any kind of a, of a comparison there?
The Steve's got the local or the current cost, I believe, don't you?
Yeah, um, I don't have it in front of me right now, but it depends on what you're cleaning. If it's a type one or a type two structure. I want to say offhand, we were paying like forty dollars for each type one structure. And more around sixty dollars for each type two, but I would have to verify that.
Well, let me throw out some numbers for you. Um, we keep, we, we keep getting. Uh, the water quality grant from DOE every two years, which is fifty thousand dollars. And we use, I'll say forty thousand of that to get our system cleaned every year. Because, um, you know, we do, we have them do one half of the city and then the other half. Uh, because it's supposed to be on a rotation. And, uh, we just, we, we don't have the facility to do it ourselves at this point and. You know, without that grant. It'll be hard for us to continue to pay for that moving forward too, because as for some of those of you who have been around a while and. John and, John and the pace crew will be, you know, giving us an updated stormwater plan, uh, sometime in the near future. We were told years ago that our stormwater fees were significantly behind everyone around us. And it was stuff like this that they were supposed to help pay for and they're still behind. And when we get that updated plan, we'll find out just how far behind we are for the things that are required of us by DOE. And, you know, having to have the facilities, having to plan to have. New street sweepers and vectors and everything to keep your stormwater. In system up to date like we're supposed to. And so, you know. It's, it's all part of the bigger picture and. We've, we've put ourselves behind the eight ball in some cases, so we just have to cross our fingers that DOE keeps giving away that fifty thousand dollar grant every two years.
Yeah, so thank you, Paula and Steve and John. And this is just another effort of. Having us ha- understand the status of our city with the needs that we have. And so finding out the information, investigating what we need to do to keep. Uh, water clean or, you know, our, our streams clean. Um, as we gather this information, we realize that, um, we need to. Have money to take care of these issues that are important to our citizens and, and Department of Ecology, you know. We've been pushing the limits with them on certain things. And so now trying to get on their good side, so to speak, or. You know, trying to, trying to do right by what we should be doing in the city and planning for the future. And having the equipment and facilities that we need. This is, this is a big important part of it. The fact that. Mr. Forba found this grand forward is, is a huge, huge thing and, um. Obviously DOE would like to see this done too. So who knows, if the costs come higher than expected, then we would certainly be reaching out to them. To see what's what kind of assistance that we could get.
Will we continue to get the fifty thousand dollar grant after this is, project is completed?
Potentially, yeah, it's. It, it's just that. That grant can't go to help pay for this. It, it's a grant, um, that keeps us in compliance with our NPDES permit. Everybody knows what the NPDES permit is, right? Okay. I don't, I don't want to be throwing stuff out at people that don't know, so. You know, with that. You know, we might still have to use part of the money to have the, the basins cleaned by outside companies. Just because, um, our crew in public works is spread really thin. You know, and it's getting thinner by the day. Really, if any of you know people who like, um. Like to do manual labor, we could really use you to have them apply.
This is a good, this is a good time, Steve. Why don't you talk about our situation?
A couple, a couple more questions on. So, so, uh, what I, what I'm hearing, it sounds like a, a cost reduction for waste disposal. And possibly the reuse of materials that currently we can't reuse right now. So, so there is some savings in there. Right? And then, um, it sounded like maybe. Uh, a potential cost increase if we start using that factor more. Because we're currently subbing that out, right? So we want to make sure that vector is in good shape.
Exactly.
Am I correct there? Okay. So.
Spot on.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to think of, uh, the, the shifting of funds and, and how we can. Use this to our, uh, to, to kind of keep things moving down there in public works.
Hey, Martin, I think you had a comment. I'm reading your mind.
Oh, uh, I do, uh, but I was kind of thinking maybe it. It, it ties to all of these discussions that are happening. Um, I was going to put it in at number five after we got through the other stuff, but. Uh, that, that's all just to all of these financial things that are hitting us at this inflection point. So I want to at least. Throw out an idea to the, to folks. And then, uh, yeah, the factor was the question also I had for Steve just on where we stood with it. Thanks, Dennis.
Yeah, to answer the question on the vector, it's a older aging piece of equipment, but has, doesn't get a whole bunch of use, not a whole bunch of hours. Uh, on it. We did, uh, replace the pump on it. I believe it's been about three years ago now. So that's. One of the major components on it that's been replaced, but it is a concern of mine. Once we get out and start using it hard. Um, being a aging piece of equipment, um, there's just no telling how it's going to hold up to the. Use and abuse. So that is a fear in the back of my head, along with the rest of our aging fleet.
And we can't put, we can't put sirens and lights on it for Nick, can we?
It'll be the fastest fifteen mile an hour pursuit.
Okay, good, good. Many more questions?
Just a point of clarification, Paula, regarding the grant from DOE. You say we receive it every two years and then we, it takes. Forty thousand each year to do half the city. Did I understand that correctly?
No, it's that we end up using forty thousand of that grant. Usually it's like twenty thousand in one year and twenty thousand in the next year. To do the parts of the city that were, that were back in the cycle to do at that point in time.
Okay, and then, uh, the balance of it, are we able to use that or we use as much?
Yeah, no, we, we use it for different things. Some of the stuff that it's been allowed to be used for is, um, like. The dog poop stations around town. We've paid for those out of it. We, you know, when we have an active grant, we actually re. Resupply those stations as well. We buy that, um.
Catch basins, catch basin repair.
The, the little medallions that you saw, you know, you see when you go around town in front of all of the.
So it's a pretty flexible grant.
It is and it isn't. We, we spend a lot of time, um, contacting them, um, and saying. Hey, you know, is it okay if we use this for, for this purpose? It has to have a direct connection to the requirements of our NPDES permit.
Okay, and then, um, placement of the new facility within the public works yard.
Oh, yeah. Um, so right now we have it, um, kind of cited for. Uh, just east of the existing, uh, storage sheds or along the eastern, um, property line. So, uh, either north of the little stormwater pond or, uh, directly west of it. So we have already, um. Done a topographic survey of the entire site. So we're a little ahead on, uh, if we went through with it with the design of it. Like I said, when we redid the plumbing of the public works yard a few years ago, we got, we got full survey of the entire, um, public works facility. So.
So on the east side?
Probably the east side. I think Steve was leaning that way. With the back of the facility against, up against the fence along Old Poplar, so.
And that's where the sewer connection is as well. So it just makes sense for that as well.
Okay, other questions? All right, hearing none. Steve, maybe a little update on our, our public work staff?
Well, we're currently down a maintenance worker two. Um, I think most of you have heard that Travis Niebusch, who's been with us for twelve years and in recent years was promoted to our lead. He's going to be leaving us here at the end of May, also beginning of June. Um, so that's going to be a huge hit. He's a, he's a great resource. He's got lots of institutional knowledge. And he's just got the drive and passion for this work and dedicated like no one I've ever met before. So. Um, yeah, real, real challenging. Going to be some big shoes to fill there, along with our maintenance worker two position. And seasonal positions. Um, we've interviewed a few. Um, haven't really, uh, had any good hits out of the, out of the ones we've, that would be good fits for the department. Um, we've made a couple of job offers, but it's competitive out there and all these other cities, including, uh, surrounding jurisdictions. Are having the same difficulty of finding and retaining and attracting employees. So, um, lots of competition out there. And, uh, seems real challenging.
Snohomish County Public Works is down over a hundred people and they are hiring. As is all of our, you know, our local cities are all in the same boat, so it's definitely difficult.
Not sustainable.
I'll be meeting with the Snohomish County Human Resources Group on, I think it's the sixteenth. Uh, for all of us to brainstorm and find out what's working for some and see if we can. Share ideas with one another, um. Cause I, I, I just can't see us throwing more money at different websites to post this stuff when we aren't getting any bites. It's hurting. Thank goodness we have Nick and that he's brought, he's got people to come in for his because I don't know what we'd be doing if. With the way that all of that's working. It's, uh. It's been, uh, it's been challenging to say the least. One of these days I know I'm going to find Steve crying.
Okay, I, I want to thank, uh, Steve and John and. For participating and, um, this is something that will come to us next week at our regular meeting. If you have additional questions. Please reach out to, uh, myself or Steve and we'll try to get those questions answered prior to next week's, uh, regular meeting. All right, moving on to item number four, review and discuss the development.
No, we don't have to discuss that, Mr. Mayor.
We don't?
No, um, so. When I was gone was when that was, when I was at my conference that was approved and Jennifer told me she goes. Oh no, I think we had that signed already and I just, it was in my folder and I was like, oh geez, this hasn't gone to council yet. Oh no. And so I put it on because Jennifer was at conference last week, so I couldn't ask her, hey, didn't we do this? I'm not finding where we did it. And, uh, so yeah, if that's already done, we can, we can move past that.
Perfect. And I do want to report that Jennifer attended a con- a conference of planners and was able to network. And gave council member Marley and myself a report. About what she learned and council member Marley and myself are going to meet with Jennifer and talk about, talk about what she learned and who she networked with. And, um, the goals for her department moving forward as she. Um, ticks off these items that we've been addressing with respect to our, we're updating our code. Um, what else? Anything else tonight?
Yeah, I have a few.
Okay, you?
I do, um. So. Because of some things that have gone on in the last few weeks, um, I've had to have a couple of different conversations with our city attorney. And one of the conversations that I had with our city attorney was regarding council attendance at planning commission hearings. And our city attorney would prefer that none of you are in attendance because those are quasi judicial issues that. Your attendance. Hinders you having an unbiased view when the paperwork comes to you from staff. The only person that they, that she would really, she'll make an exception for is the liaison. To the, to the planning commission, but for the rest of you, you should not be in attendance when it is a hearing regarding. A quasi judicial matter, which is any of our land use issues.
So they're supposed to, they're supposed to come to the council meetings to look at this with the perspective of the balance of the council. Without any additional information from public comments and during the meeting. That would, could bias you against, um, being. Having the same experience as the other council members, despite the fact that it would be additional information. That's not what our legal counsel is telling us that we should be doing.
No. And, um.
That's been a longstanding thing that we've been, we've worked to adhere to.
Yeah, and, and the other thing that, you know, based on some of the comments I heard and everything that I have to warn you all about. Is ex parte communication. And essentially what that means is if you are discussing an item. That is one of our quasi judicial items with anyone, not just with each other. But with planning commissioners, technically with the public, because the public has an interest. In those things, you are essentially putting the city at risk. Um, because you have engaged in communication about a legal matter. That has not come before you that a final decision isn't made on yet. Until the final decision is made, you guys are not supposed to be discussing the merits of it. And all of that with one another or with other people with the planning commission you that. That puts us in a very, very dangerous position and I will just say, um. Knowing the fact that we have lost, um, some very serious. Lawsuits in the past due to land use issues not being handled properly. Should someone decide to challenge us, um, if something like that were to be involved. Uh, that will come up in those proceedings that we have already been nailed for not having done things properly in the past. And, um, unfortunately, judges and juries like to think that governments have lots of money and that we should pay. If we do anything wrong.
We've had, um, you know, our insurer is very concerned because we've had some large claims against. Public work, not recently, in spin in the past a bit. And so we, our insurer is concerned and so is our city attorney. In the, uh, the handbooks to council members that. Um, you received or you can get online. Via, see. Who did I get those from?
MRSC, AWC.
You guys, AWC is the one that I like the best, but there's lots of helpful information that helps you decide what a quasi judicial. Issue is and helps you stay out of trouble with discussing things that you're not supposed to discuss. Uh, outside of the council realm. It's, the idea is that the public gets to hear you discuss and make a decision. And that the input that you receive is the same as everyone else's, so that you're not prejudging or have information that will. Help you or help you not make a decision in the best interests of the city.
Where that, all, where all that was concerned to, um, chatting with Dawn about it a little bit. As well, um, one of the other recommendations is that you stick to things that are actually part of. What makes the decision, um, which I know there was back and forth amongst everybody, um, regarding the comp plan. The comp plan is not the planning document for decision making on, uh, subdivisions and short plats. It is our code and it is state statute. The comp plan is a future looking document. And that if everything was perfect, that's where we'd love to see everything be. However, it is not what makes the decisions and the decisions and the discussion needs to stay to the code. And the laws that actually dictate those things, um, because again, you. Because again, you could cause an outcome that would be detrimental to the developer because you are reacting and talking about things and that aren't supposed to be part of what makes that determination of preliminary plot or final plat. We have the same problem with planning commission, just so you know. So they're getting the same conversation in a couple of weeks. But if you, you know, you, you come in, you say, here's my concerns. That, that part's fine. But then when it comes to, I'd like to see us do something else. You need to, you need to keep those comments and bring those up like during miscellaneous business and say, you know, in light of the fact that we've had some, you know, plats come before us, you know, I'd like to see us discuss XYZ in the near future and see about changing our code.
So we, we will, we will develop a workshop for those topics. If you have concerns about our code, we will, please bring them up to me or during a meeting and we will plan a workshop and prepare to help us deep, do a deep dive into our code and what's there or what isn't there. And, and then make those changes in a workshop setting. And then in a meeting setting, make the changes to the code. Should we, should you find that necessary? And then at that point, when a plaque comes before us, then we can use those amended ordinances to help us make good decisions with respect to future planning in our city.
Her concern is that by us discussing all those things that we wish were different, that it could affect the outcome when you're supposed to be looking at what is. So that was, that was her. Now, after all of that, this, this may be good or bad news to some of you. After June first, we all get to start having our meetings in person. For those of you who have been on the council in the last year and a half, it'll be the very first time you've ever had a council meeting in person. So June seventh will be your first meeting. If we have a workshop that day, that'll be the first time that you guys all get to be at the table. Then I'll have your little plaques with your names on them in front of you. So I, I'm excited about it, except for having to drive home to Granite Falls late at night, but you know, whatever. I chose that.
I think my family's excited about it. Get me out of that.
No, we look forward to seeing this. And I think, you know, this, this Zoom forum is something that I adopted the first month I became mayor. And so it's, since I've been mayor, we have never met in person together. And this not only affects us, but the other commissions and library board and civil service. And basically because of the governor's changing of his proclamation that this is the opportunity that we have to do, to meet in person. I should, and I look forward to that.
Question?
Yes.
Will we record video or audio of the meetings for people? Because I think that people like turning that record. How do we, audio recorded?
Yeah, it's audio recorded. Always has been.
And we will be encouraging citizens to, to join us in person.
To know plans for TV Briar.
No plans for TV Briar.
And June seventh will be a black tie event.
Yes, I expect you all to come decked out.
Who's bringing cocktails?
I won't be consuming them.
I have a couple of questions. When we get, are we still?
Yeah, go, go ahead, yeah.
Yeah, that's it.
Um, I noticed again, in, I don't know where to bring it up, but we got a little chunk of Thirty Sixth Avenue that folks are out maintaining and there's no apparent use for that. Sir, is there a way we can get rid of that? Like, give it away or?
We, we have a, we have an answer for that because some of, Steve, can you come back on? Isn't that the place where everybody's wanting us to give them right away?
Yeah. So several of the homeowners in the Timbervale neighborhood have bought the adjacent parcels behind them. And then, so what separates their two parcels is that right of way that you're talking about that unopened right of way. So recently, at least one and possibly two of those homeowners are putting up some temporary wire fencing. And I caught wind of that and kind of informed them of the process of how to go about legally putting the fence and getting encroachment form filled out, approved by council and recorded. And then I've also had the discussion with them that they may want to petition the city as far as getting that vacated because it does not have a use, like you said, Mike. And it's basically just another maintenance item for public works. They call us when the blackberries and all vegetation starts growing into their yards. And so it's one of the areas we've typically used the Monroe work crew or when we don't have them, we get our in-house staff down there. So I'm not real familiar with how that process works, how it gets initiated. I know you've brought it up before, Mike, but it's my understanding that the, the homeowners need to initiate that conversation and get the ball rolling on that.
Great. Yeah, it just looks like wasted dollars to me.
Anything else?
Yes, I gathered that we are moving forward with National Night Out, Sea Scare and Music in the Park again this summer. We getting on that road. Are we going to be able to do that stuff?
Yeah, we. The Parks Department, we are planning Music in the Park. We're actually potentially planning two Music in the Parks.
Cool. Wow. Sea Scare two?
Sea Scare as well. Yes. I mean, after that egg hunt, I think people are.
That was impressive.
It was.
Yeah. And National Night Out, the, the chief and I and Chad talked about that this morning. We are working on the venue and who's going to be there and all that stuff. Yeah. So that we're, we're excited about that.
How does, how does the timing on National Night Out and Sea Scare timeout? Sometimes they're like back to back. A Tuesday, Wednesday, which always put an extra burden on the, frankly, it was on, on the police force and stuff, I know, because we have to bring those folks all the way in to really help out.
Share their week apart.
Oh, good.
Good. Okay.
Uh, Chief, on that National Night Out, are you going to get a chance to address, not to throw you out of the bus here, but I'd love for you to get a chance to address the community. I think they really love to hear that.
Nick, you're not coming through for some reason. I think you have.
Have a double muted.
Yeah.
How about now?
There you go.
Okay. I got your little handy dandy council speaker here. I forgot to press the button. And yes, definitely. So everyone that I've been involved with in previous police departments, the department head would always give us feel and welcome and entertain the questions and, and so forth. And one of the things I was telling the, our department head meetings today was that traditionally in the past, the Parks Board has had a large part in National Night Out. And I want them to continue that, but I also know that they have a lot going on and we wanted to take a, a lot of the heavy, heavy lifting away off of the Parks Board's shoulders in a lot of the, the behind the scenes of building up National Night Out. But at the same time, Lieutenant Redout is building a subcommittee to pre-plan a lot of this stuff as well as donations and logistics behind who's going to be coming and vendors and so forth. So he's going to be reaching out to Katie. Councilman Nick and he's got a citizen at large in mind to also partake in bringing some of that brainstorming and the logistics so that we can have more, more, more hands and minds preparing so that the Parks Board doesn't have to, like historically, have to take on that burden when they are also trying to do sea scare relatively at the same time. So it, it'll be a good partnership. Councilman Nick has said that he would, I think you committed to at least fifteen or twenty hours a week coming up in June to assess. So.
Those pretty, Chief, I'm, I've got time.
Marley just volunteered him.
Oh.
Not himself, Nick.
Yeah. I volunteered Nick too.
Second it.
We, we've always had some kind of a band for National Night Out and the little stage. And so that's usually where you jump up and do your thing because that, that's always been a part of it in the past.
Yeah.
What's my budget for that?
I'm trying to convince Lieutenant Redout who sings and plays the guitar to maybe do something for the community. So we'll see if I can twist his arm enough. He is on probation. So.
We could, we could, we could get it in the contract.
Yes.
Singing lieutenant.
And you can back up chief. I'm not participating if that's what you're thinking, but.
We can, maybe we can get them to pay us not to sing.
Okay.
Yeah, I wanted to put something at least for council to think about. I mentioned it a little bit earlier when Dennis had mentioned me. We in Briars, we've been doing our budgeting. There's been kind of a couple of things that have been, one was running really conservative. You know, tried to hold the spending down. We, we've had several, several, you know, general kinds of approach we've been taking. But as I noted earlier, we're starting to hit an inflection point. We've had, I mean, we've had a rather large expense, which we did to help down in south end of town there with the sidewalks, all good stuff there, but you know, multiple hundreds of thousands of dollars, got the bridge, we get grants, but we got the D cat. Plus we've got all the challenges of RFA coming up, things chiefs trying to work with the cars. And I wanted to at least put out an idea that, that this could be a, maybe an interim thing we do for, but try to maybe put together a finance type committee that's separate of the whole approving of claims, checks and all that, but is really helping work with the mayor, Paula. And looking at a ten year plan because there's some big nuts here that we're going to be ending up one way or another. You know, don't know quite how it's going to shape out, but there's expense. We've also got to deal with, you know, look at RFA happened as a contract that you lose the fifty cents. We've got to make sure police is being covered. I was, I got a chance a couple of weeks ago, met with Steve and the public works folks. And we even just had a brief conversation about an idea of, you know, we need to be showing what those vehicles have their own cycles. We've got to work through. Steve alluded to that a bit today. And getting that into the planning so that we get a better, and I, you know, kind of a ten year, maybe a plan that may be overly ambitious, but at least trying to lay this out because when we go to citizens, there's going to be some asks here. And I really think that, you know, in the fifty years that Briar's been around fifty plus now, you know, we haven't really gotten to that, but I feel like this is something that we really need to do because we'll talk about, oh, there's this expense or this, or we've been lucky, we've gotten this amounts. And I don't feel like we're really quite putting a full on plan that we really, I think, need to have and give this council even more insight and just give ourselves a better picture on what the health of the city looks like and what we're going to have to do. So anyway, that's just an idea, you know, two to maybe three council members can't have more than that. But to again, work with Mayor Paula, help chief again, Steve, and just kind of starting to put a overall more planning in longer range of looking at our, our budget. So that's just something I want to put on the table for.
Yeah, thank you. No, thank you, Martin. I think, I think that's a good idea. I know.
Great idea.
We, we've had some vehicles, you know, Steve's given me a list of the our public works vehicles and, and how old they are, how many miles they have on them. And we do, and then with our hydrology report that's coming soon from PACE. That could present some challenges. We are still working on the bridge, getting your proper approvals so that we can get a number to, you know, get our bridge, our pedestrian bridge back. Yeah, there's a lot of items. So I think that's, I think that's a good idea.
We've got a lot of decisions to make and then frankly, the next five to six months and, and then, you know, sell our public on it. So. Anyways, just.
Thank you, Martin.
Great thought.
All right. If there's nothing else, we will see you in a week at our regular meeting. Thank you, everyone.
Have a good night.
Have a wonderful night, everyone.